All the September 27th, 2018, regular board meeting for the Pickle City Schools to order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Please stand and join me with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes for the regular meeting on the 23rd and the August 27th work session. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
If there's no other, no other comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Also on the agenda, any changes to the agenda for tonight? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There's no legislative report, just a couple things from the Career Center. On the 25th of October, from at 5 o'clock, we're going to dedicate and cut the ribbon on the Vet Science Building, and going to be a business after hours that night, so that with four area chambers attending. So that's, should be an interesting evening, the kids are up and at 'em. If you look at Facebook, they had the kids working on horses today with the childcare kids there too. So lots going on there, and we've got some kids, students going to the FFA convention in Indianapolis, also in October. So other than that, that's all from the Career Center. And I have nothing on hearing of the public on the agenda items? Okay, Mr. Hiddle, financial reports.
Good evening. Were there any questions on the financial reports tonight? One thing that I'll point out on that is, you could tell from the three-year report that you receive, you can see what I was discussing last month about the income tax revenue went up, but the property tax revenue went down. Wash, so that showed up on that report like I discussed. Another thing I wanted to just let you all know is that I attended the Association for School Business Officials National Meeting in, we, last weekend. And so I attended sessions that dealt with improving our student activities, multiple ones of those, keeping track and records on that and best practices. Also went to a session on ESSA, which is new federal requirements on how our funding is coded, and they want everything down to the building, and eventually drilling it down to the topic, the subject matter that is being taught. And it's going to end up being pretty interesting to see how that works, because everybody codes everything just a little bit differently from school district to school district, or state to state. When you're at a national conference in Oregon, the states come out and said, this is how you're going to code everything. They've just collectively agreed, this is how we're going to do it. In other states, they haven't done that. It's, there's still that leeway and you can decide where you want to code things at. So it'll be interesting how that works, because then you get all the data together, and then how are you really comparing apples to apples if people aren't coding everything exactly the same way? So it'll just be interesting to see how that moves going forward. Talked about crowdfunding, went to some meetings on crowdfunding. Crowdfunding is where it's online, donations online. So somebody puts up their, hey, I need XYZ in my classroom, and then people start putting money towards that. And the State Auditor's Office put out a guidance on how that's supposed to operate. So we've been working to make sure that we're in compliance with that. And also, I'm looking into like, what kind of website option do we have where we can actually take donations online on ourselves, so that we don't have a third-party intermediary? Because there's some places that can charge 30, 40, 50% of what you're raising to do these crowdfunding things. So you gotta be careful about doing those, and making sure you know who you're doing business with. So anyways, we've got a board policy in place for that, but just trying to make sure that we're getting best practices out there for our staff, and making sure that that's in there. The other things that we did while I was there is I went to the Certificate of Excellence Award that we received from ASBO. I'm now sitting on a committee for them, so we met about that. How do we get out the word to try and get more districts to do a comprehensive annual fiscal report, discussing the benefits of getting that double set of eyes to check all of our financial records, so it's not just me saying, hey, it looks good, or our auditor saying, hey, it looks good, but we have another set of eyes saying that the district's doing what they're supposed to do. So I'm part of that group to try to convince other districts that it's worth the investment to do that work. So that's just an update from there. It was good stuff. One of the other things on the agenda tonight is the FY19 appropriations, final appropriations. We approved temporary appropriations last June, I say last June, I should say in June. And then in September, we approved the final appropriations. And so we've appropriated just shy of $50 million this year, and that encompasses all of our funds. The general fund is right around, just a little bit over $36 million. Were there any questions about that? The next thing on there is salary adjustments. We had $23,160 worth of tuition reimbursement going out, which is great to see so many of our staff members taking advantage of this. It's an investment in our district. We had, it looks like 11 staff members that are going from masters to masters 10, or from a bachelor's to a master's. So we had quite a few people moving in that. And so just something to point out, it's always good to see this, because I think we're really investing in and making sure that we're getting the latest and greatest information in the classrooms. And that is all I had for my report. Any questions?
You might mention, you were talking about the difference between the property tax and the income tax, and that big difference was the valuation of the mall, correct?
Correct. The mall, the mall was the significant change in the property tax. We finally were able to settle on a number with them, and it reduced our collections significantly, plus they got money back from the previous year. So it sort of offsets that number pretty severe this year. It should improve a little bit next year as we move forward, because we didn't have to quote-unquote "back pay" some of the taxes that we've previously collected on that. So, but it's just something, it's sort of interesting to watch, because you pick it up somewhere, and then you lose it somewhere else. And so it's keeping that pattern of consistent, stable local revenue at this point.
Are there any other questions of Jeremy? If not, can we have a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio. Mrs. Mc Mackin. Mr. Bostick. Mr. Height.
Aye.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. This month, we will feature Tracy Chodlin, the principal, lead principal of Washington Primary School. She's going to give a building update on some of the progress they're making there with their students. Chodlin?
My, I'm going to do a little presentation, and there's some video clips of some students in here talking about some of the work that they've been doing, and I thought you guys would enjoy that. So our focus for this year is going to be helping child. So that's going to be showing academic growth, social, emotional growth, and of course wellness and development for staff and students. So we'll talk about academics. This year, we are focused on balanced literacy, which means that students are going to be reading and writing each and every day. And we're working on building stamina so that students can read and write for increased periods of time as the year goes on. For Reader's Workshop, what they're doing this year is the teacher will present like a 10-minute mini lesson to the students with a very specific focus in mind. And the students will go back and either work independently, or with a partner, or in a small group, and then, you know, practice that skill, and then they'll call them back to share at the end of the lesson to kind of share. We're applying that in our learning. And then that's kind of going to be the same idea for Writer's Workshop. So they do the mini lesson, the students go back, they practice it, and then they come back and share out what they've written. With again, the focus being on the specific skill that the teacher had talked about today. So here is two students that are going to talk to us a little bit about their... She's going to show, on the left-hand side, she's going to show how she's graphing her reading, and on the right-hand side, she's going to talk about how she's graphing her stamina.
Put a title and date in here, and I put the general level of page starting right here, so we know where we ended and started for Reading Workshop. This isn't my, uh, my lecture. We, we colored in after our, after our reading workshop, Reader's Workshop, and some days we can come get over 20, or some days we get under 20. And that for stamina.
How's your stamina chart?
Yeah.
What are you building your stamina for?
So we can have more fun with the reading.
What's your goal?
Our goal is to get to 45 minutes.
So she's saying that they're graphing their stamina, and then on, I don't know if you could see it, but on the back wall, they have like a big chart over there, and then they know what their goal is, and what they're trying to reach. So that's a little bit about Reader's Workshop there. In this slide, we have students here are going to talk about reading Just Write books, which are books that are at their level. You'll notice the boy will state in this that he wants to read at a higher level, he says. And what that means is that he wants to be able to read harder books. So as he grows, he wants to go to read harder books. And the little girl, she's going to be retelling what she's reading, which is a very important skill for students to be able to do, to be able to summarize main points, and be able to retell somebody what they read about, or what they watched, even if they're talking about a movie. But it's just important to be able to summarize and retell.
So are you doing Reader's Workshop this year?
Yes.
And can you tell me what you are doing, or how you feel about reading this year?
I love it.
And why is that?
Because it's fun.
And do you have a goal that you're working on this year?
I want to get up to a high level.
You do? And what do you have to do to get up to a higher level?
Keep reading.
Great job. So what is this book right here that you want to be reading?
Max and Zoe at the library.
And what Max and Zoe books have you already read?
Max and Zoe, The Lumention Fight.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit about Max and Zoe, The Lumention Fight?
The characters are Max, Zoe, and Anna, and the problem was that Anna was a little bit to peanuts, and she had to sit at the peanut safe table. And she was allowed to pick one friend every day to sit with her. And, um, and the lunchroom, um, Zoe saw Anna pick her, but Max saw, um, she picked him. And, um, when they started having a fight, and the teacher came over to tell, um, about, um, one one friend. And then Max and Zoe started fighting even louder, and the teachers, they both had to sit at the regular table. And they apologized to each other, and then at the end, um, the Max got an idea, and she told, he told Zoe, and it was to make, um, a paper that they hung up outside of their classroom door, and it was a peanut. And it was a list of whoever wanted to sit with Anna at the peanut safe table could take turns.
So there she retell the story that she, and she really enjoyed this story, so she's going to read more by the, by the same one right here. Over here on the left, we just have, this is a first grade classroom, and they have their little Max, so they sit side by side, and they're doing partner work, and they sit back to back when they're doing independent work of all the materials. So here, I interviewed, and you can tell the kids are a little bit nervous when we interview them. But the boy, the boy's going to talk a little bit about how he loves to write, to free write. So there's not really a specific topic, but I do want you to notice, he reads five pages of his writing on here, which is awesome for beginning of the year, second grade. And the little girl's going to read six pages. And that, when she's reading this, her writing back, she is actually using, you know, fluent strategies, because she's reading with expression, she's pausing when she's supposed to. So what she's learning in reading is carrying over as she's doing her own writing.
Do you enjoy writing?
Yeah.
What do you enjoy about writing?
Um, I like making my bright free stuff when we can, like, we don't have to write about sharing stuff.
Okay, so have you done any free writing this year yet?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to read it to me?
I play baseball, tomorrow I play the Bengals, they're supposed to be really good. They're in the championship game, my team has called the Hurricanes, we're also really good. The game was at seven in the evening, my friend Luke was up to bat first. He hit the ball to third base, the others seemed to have the ball in direction for first base. It went high out, then it was my turn, but I hit the ball. Oh no, and the batter was in second, the score was 6-3, we were ahead. I was up to bat last inning, too. I hit it in outfield, and they caught the ball. It was two outs, two strikes, and three balls. That means four counts. Well, good batting average, we hit it home run. It's over, we win. After we won the game, we all had a pizza party at Domino's. I got a cheese pizza, it was really good. We had got trophies, they were gold, and said our names on them. Then I got to have a sleepover with my friend. I had a great baseball season.
Very good. Have you been doing Writer's Workshop this year?
Yes.
And have you written something recently?
Yes.
Would you like to read it to me?
One day it was a preschool school. I saw my teacher standing on the carpet looking at me and smiling too. I was a little mended out, because I've never seen a teacher who seemed so nice. We were two best friends and all, lined up together, and their names are Navea and Justine. They are super nice and kind, I love them so as friends. When we left school, when we left school, Navea and Justine went to my house. We had a blast. It was so much fun. We spent most of our time playing. When we got bored, we made a blanket plot in the living room, in, in the living room. For the, for our videos, lots of blankets, colors, toys, and our favorite things. Then we found out that people were at my house, and it was, and when it turned night, we had a god crying. It was the best. Then when the fire blew out, we all went inside. We had a snack, then watched a little TV. Then we did a craft, and then we went crazy. We ate chocolate. Then a minute, then a minute had went by, and we had to go way down on my book bed on the bottom bunk. We were watching a movie, the movie was Yes, The End.
So there you go, they were reading their own writing, and they really enjoyed writing, and they were reading it as slowly as they could, and I felt like that was a really awesome thing to see. Okay, so our next area that we will kind of talk about is social, emotional growth. So the first thing that we're doing is PDIS, and I'm sure you've heard a lot of, you know, of all schools are doing PDIS. So we are basically teaching students how to behave in common areas, like the hallway, the restroom, cafeteria, things like that. And then we are practicing and providing feedback to them, and then we are going to actually reward that behavior when it's appropriate. So if I see students walking down the hall, I'll have pride cards on me. I might hand them a pride card and say, I really enjoyed watching you walk down the hall with your hands at your sides quietly. Or giving them specific feedback to what they're doing that's so good. And then they will take those pride cards, and then they give them to their teacher, and their teacher has a graph outside their door. So they graph them. Every time they get to like an increment of 10, 10, 20, 30, 40, the class earns a reward, which could be asking the principal to come in and read to the class, eating lunch with the principals, just different, there's a list that they all have that they get a pick from. And then also, we make announcements at the end of every day for, like if a class gets to an increment of 10, we come home and we announce this, we play, like celebrate the homecoming announcements. And then we announce, hey, some of those class just got to 50 pride cards, and then we all clap and cheer in announcements, so it just builds the kids up to try to earn those cards. One other thing that we're doing this year is PACTs in the classroom. PACTs go along with PDIS, it's positively rewarding students for appropriate behavior. So the teachers will teach the 10 known health strategies to the students, and then they will begin playing what we call the PACT-based Behavior Game. So the teacher might say, okay, boys and girls, we're going to play a game for 20 minutes. And she'll say, we can have no more than three spleens during this time, and you're going to earn a reward. And spleens are things that... So they'll play a game, she'll mark down any spleens that she sees at the end, and you know, they earn a reward, they get that immediately. And it's like a minute reward, and it's, it's something that, like normally they're not allowed to. Like maybe it's, you know, get on the ground and crawl like a worm, or something like that. But it's immediate, it's quick, it's not costly, and the kids really enjoy doing it. So that's what we're focusing on for PACTs. Another thing for social, emotional this year that we're going to focus on is the counselors checking in and out with students, who needs it. And she's also pulling groups and working one-on-one with students throughout the day. So she's really zeroing in on those students who really need maybe more than once a day with her, and being able to provide that to those students. Social skills also, every three days, the students are receiving instruction and role-playing on various social skills. So we think that when you combine those all together, that's going to help with our social, emotional growth. And this is, the students just saying the R.A.K.E. pledge.
R.A.K.E. Every day, be respectful, be responsible, and be kind. Eric Watt, Pride is Community Wine.
So every day, so every day they do, you know, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then they also do the R.A.K.E. pledge, and students are able to understand that that's respect, responsibility, kindness, which is what we want to focus on every single day. There's some new items that are in the guidance room. She's just trying to, again, pull kids in, that maybe means sensory breaks and things like that throughout the day, and have the materials there for them to use. So with the PACTs, one of the first things that the teachers do is say to everybody as PACT leaders, what do we want to see more of, hear more of, do more of, and feel more of? And all the teachers go through and they discuss this with their class. And then a little bit, I talked to you a little bit about spleens, are the negative things, and then toodles are positive notes that they write to each other. And these two little girls are just going to talk to you about PACTs. These are kindergarten students.
Can you tell me what it means to be a PACT leader?
I seem to have good studies. And be respectful, and responsible, and be kind.
Sorry. I'm trying to think, she talked a little bit about what a spleen is, and I said, you can explain to me what a spleen is, and she says, when they're doing something they're not supposed to be, so there you go. And then along with the PACTs again are the toodles. So toodles are positive notes, and this little girl's going to tell you about that. This is a first grade student.
Can you tell me what a PACT toodle is?
Something that you write to, um, a friend.
And would it be something that they're doing well, or something that they're not doing well?
Something that they're doing well.
Have you ever written a toodle? Do you think you've written a lot of toodles?
Um, not much.
And have you ever received a toodle?
No.
I felt really bad about that. I was expecting her to say no, but I was, I had to go back and make sure that she was getting a toodle. So again, this is just focusing on positive, focusing on positive. Staff can write them to students, students can write them to each other, students can write them about staff, it's just everybody. Everybody gets to, we as principals write them to teachers, so just promoting the positive. And then I talked to you a little bit about how we're doing the social skills. Every three days, students are receiving social skill strategies. This would just be a picture of them in social skill group, and you know, they were learning skills, were learning, you know, focus attention, listen, be assertive, use self-talk, and then, and the strategies. We also had Rachel's Challenge Assembly this year, where they talk about being, you know, kind to one another, and not bullying, and those kinds of things. So we did have an assembly just like last week on that. And then we have K-Kids, which is, you know, our student body that tries to help in the community and do good things. These two students are running our elections tomorrow, so I interviewed them just to kind of talk to them about why they want to run for K-Kids.
What's your name?
Reagan.
And Reagan, what are you running for?
President.
The president of K-Kids?
Yes.
And why do you want to be the president of K-Kids?
I want to be the president of K-Kids, because I like helping people and helping my community.
And what do you think your responsibilities will be if you get to be the president?
Um, I would have to make decisions, take the lead, and I would have to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to talk when they want to.
Thank you. Okay, so what's your name?
Chloe.
And Chloe, what are you running for?
I'm running for vice president.
Of K-Kids, right? Okay, why do you want to be vice president of K-Kids?
Well, because I want to help whoever is president, try to help the community, and try and make the school a better place.
And what do you think your responsibilities will be if you get to be vice president?
Is to try to help out the president, try and talk with her to see what will happen next.
Thank you.
And there was no prompting, I just have to say, in any of these videos, I did not prompt them ahead of time. This is truly the students being interviewed by me, so I thought they did a fantastic job. There are a couple of their banners, like, to try to get people to vote for them. So I thought those were cute and free to listen there. And then finally, we go to wellness. So this year, one of the first things that we did already was the Race Day, which was a huge success, it was a nice day, a little hot, that was nice. Motivational Mondays, our teachers will do something with their students that is fitness-related. And Go Little, we do, lots of teachers do that, it's quick, because kids up, up and moving, and especially if like they're kind of tired or slumpy, then they can do a little quick Go Little, to get them energized and back at work again. These are some upcoming dates of things that we have planned. There was like the obstacle course, jump room for heart, adventure, every kid healthy weekend, and then we have Adventure Day. There's just some upcoming events that we have for wellness. And then, as we're talking about whole child, I couldn't leave out music and art, so we do have some upcoming events for music. I don't have the program scheduled yet, but I did want to mention this as well. I just think it's really neat to see some of what we're doing in action, so I thought this would be a great way for you to see what the kids are getting with what we're doing each and every day. Questions?
Thank you, looks like you're very busy.
Thank you, looks like you're very busy.
Thanks, Rachel.
Okay, report cards, information?
Nate, can you put the next presentation up there, please? So the report card came out earlier this month, and I've been out to several groups from Chamber Rotary, we've done the state of the schools, many opportunities just to get out there and talk to people, and answer some questions, and kind of share where we are, how we compare to other districts, and some of the challenges we're facing, and a little bit about some of the preliminary work we're doing to start to counteract those challenges. So statewide, on the left-hand side there, you can see how many districts received As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs. If you can picture a bell curve, that's pretty much what the state expects out of the test scores, and that really does fit that. When you add them all up together, we fell in the C range, right in the middle there, and on the far right, you see charter schools. You hear a lot about charter schools, of course, in the news, and you can see what those look like in terms of the results that they're getting as well. Our results, I've said before multiple times, I really like to compare us to similar school districts. So the state of Ohio will find districts that are the most similar to your district, and they'll do that by a criteria of looking at demographics in terms of everything from population to free and reduced, they'll look at income, size of your town, size of your district, all those important pieces that make you similar. And then they'll give you that list, and they'll actually rank them in order. So Sidney is actually the most like school district to us, they have been for several years. These are just put in alphabetical order, no particular range in terms of performance. But I highlighted blue the Pickle City School District, and you can kind of see where we go in the categories in terms of what they gave with letter grades. You do see that we received straight As and the value-added again. This is our second year in a row for receiving all As in that. Three years ago, we received all As and one B in the gifted range. We're pretty sure that that gifted range that year was a miscalculation in reporting, so potentially, we could add three years, but definitely for the last two years. And that gives us the opportunity to earn the momentum award, which you see there on the right-hand side. And it's a great thing to celebrate, because it shows that you're meeting and exceeding the expected growth that a district should be getting. So we're really growing our kids pretty well, and after doing a lot with value-added over the years, it's a very complex state formula, of course. It's, you want to celebrate this, but you're always hesitant, because you can never maintain that kind of growth. So the fact that we've done it three years in a row is very exciting, and it's also a little bit nervous, because sometimes district will plateau and they'll flatline for several years, but we've done a really good job of growing the progress with our students, so I'm really pleased with that. We do get compared a lot to districts within the county. A lot of times, I think, you know, media will be selling newspapers in that range, and people want to know how you fit within that area, so a lot of times, we'll get put in with that. And so I put that up there just so we can see kind of how we fit countywide, even though our communities are very, very different in the Miami County range. None of those schools up there are similar to us in terms of what the state reports with demographics. I did put there at the bottom some results that we get from what is known as the Crawl Test, which is the kindergarten readiness assessment. On the right-hand side, you can see what that test for. They look for social foundations, mathematics, language, and literacy, and some physical development of the students. I've studied our data for many years, and of course, when I did curriculum, I did a lot with data, and what we have noticed is our Crawl Scores come in the lowest in the county and have for several years, actually. Crawl Score Tests are given that first week, second week of kindergarten, so it really has nothing to do with schools per se, it's how kids are prepared to come into kindergarten and the school setting, ready to learn. And you can see on the on-track column, which is the second to last one in that range, where districts kind of fall in that area. It's always interesting, because if you look at the districts in our county that got Bs, typically, they score very well with their kindergarten readiness assessment, and those students maintain that growth throughout. And the districts like us that struggle to get better ratings, we rank lower. So we have to work really extra hard, spend a lot more time and money, energy, and resources to get our students to where they can compete with other districts that come in where the students are really ready for the programming. We have looked at some ideas for preschool to try to address this, have talked to some districts. Some of the concerns is that it's a big investment, and you can build the program, but you can't mandate it, there is no mandatory preschool. So sometimes districts will invest quite a bit in hopes that they can capture students early and get them those readiness skills, so when they come into kindergarten, they have some of those advantages. So doing that could be, could be a great thing, it might not give us the impact we want. So we are meeting as an administrative team, we're talking about some different things. So potentially, maybe we have to wait till they get to kindergarten like we do now, but when we have them, they're a captive audience. So do we design maybe a different kind of kindergarten program for some of those students that show a lack in preparing, being prepared for school, and develop a different curriculum sequence and process for them to go through kindergarten, so we can try to do everything possible to get them caught up and get them back on the right path. Again, it's going to require extra resources, time, and training, and so on, to get to that level. But we're at the very beginning discussion points of that, and we've got a couple of different options that we're looking at. We know we have to do something, because we've got to give those kids that same advantage coming into our programs. Another problem that we face is the attendance. We've talked about this several times, but you can see our chronic absences, which is more than 10%, which would be 18 days. So we do have a number of students that fall in that range, and with some new Senate bills that have been put in place, it makes it more difficult for us to be able to take students and hold them accountable in the court system, so that there are compliance factors that can support us. So Frank Patrizio, one of our board members, gave us a great opportunity to meet with Scott Altenberger, who will be future magistrate?
Provation.
Probation in the court system. And one of the things we wanted to do was kind of express our concerns and talk about this factor, and the role that attendance plays in getting our students, again, on track, and to have all the important competitive edge that they need to have with other students that not only are in our district, but in the surrounding areas. If students are missing this much, it's more than just making up the work, they're missing important collaboration and communication opportunities, those ability or opportunities to confirm their learning with the teacher, and to get that differentiated instruction that's so important to make it stick. So having the chance to talk to them and expressing our concern over the new legislation, and trying to find ways to get them engaged as early as possible, so we don't have to wait until possibly April before we can even try to get a kid into the court system, or they would be forced to be compliant with the mandatory attendance laws that we have to follow. So again, very preliminary, they were great listeners, they asked for a proposal, Mindy Kierhardt's leading up a process with some of our administrative team to write up some ideas and to present to him, and we felt very optimistic after those conversations, that we could possibly get some new ideas flowing here to give us the support we need to improve that.
Are there any national statistics that show, like state to state, I wonder how similar other states are?
I don't know. Now, the new legislation that we're facing is an Ohio piece, so it could be different in different states. Even before this took place, there were counties that took care of the last attendance, you know, issues differently. So, for example, in Shelby County, they seemed to be a little bit more progressive in getting students to be compliant versus Miami County. So when you talk to other districts and see what they, the advantages they had, or the challenges they had, they might have been greater or less, so... But we are looking, and right now, I think principals, the last we talked, are saying that they're a little bit higher, in terms of our attendance is better, I mean, right now, but the same students that were chronic last year are starting to creep back into that factor. So if we don't get a very early intervention going and get that system back in place for them, they're going to come right back into these charts that you see right up here and become that statistic we're trying to prove on. Our other piece, our other challenge is graduation. This is the third year in a row where we've started school without knowledge of what the graduation requirements are going to be finally realized as being. And right now, they're kind of projecting, maybe February, we should have something in mind, even though there's a lot of discussion. And I've tried to share as many articles as I can on it, and it seems like every time the school, state school board meets, they have this conversation in hand. And I think there's some discussion in terms of, some people think that college, I'm sorry, graduation preparation is all about college, so they're putting a lot of emphasis on, kids have to be ready for that moment. But there are other people that are saying, there's other pathways that students can follow after graduation, such as going right into the workforce, they might go into the military, they might choose a vocation. There's lots of different post-secondary options for them to do, and they're trying to offer as many pathways as possible. The proponents to that are saying, "We're just giving kids too many options to go out there and do different things, and they want to go right back to, let's just get them all ready for a college." So there's this debate in terms of, what does it mean to be a graduate that's ready to go out into the real world? I'll show you in a minute here the new state strategic plan, it really opens it up, I think, and offers the four pathways that a student could go into that I think is realistic, and if you're a parent, you've got kids that are getting ready to graduate, you want your students to have opportunities and different things that they would be happy in doing, and it is more than just a college opportunity. But you can see reasons why some of our students did not graduate last year. We also did have the E-COT closing that happened last year, which forced us to investigate and try to find and locate 69 students at different levels, many which we had never met or did not even have a relationship with, because they had never been in our schools. Some of the students ended up not living here, we found other students that were living here. The state really kind of took the last known addresses of the students that were in E-COT, contacted all the districts, and said, "Find these students and get them into a school program." So some resisted, some came on, but we had 18-year-olds that had maybe three credits, and there was just no way we could get them caught up in the amount of time that was required. Those results, because graduation results are always are reported a year behind, those results that we really struggled with with the E-COT won't be on until next year's report. So the results you see this year for our graduation rate does not factor in the E-COT piece, so next year's could be a bigger challenge. I give Daryl Hyatt and Mr. Messick and their team just a ton of credit, I try to keep you posted every time we get one of those struggling students to graduate, and I think this year we've had maybe three so far that might have returned for their fifth round of work, but they have just been very diligent about getting those students on track, and we've seen some students graduate. So they do, the state did get a new strategic plan, you can see it on the left there, it's called Each Child, Each Future, which again focuses on the whole child. I'm glad that they're finally realizing that there's more to a student than just a test score, because there really is quite a bit of factors out there, including the mental health and the wellness issues that we really need to start paying attention to. And it's important for a student to have those factors in there, because we can't, we can't just try to get people to come in and pass a test, there's just way much more to a child than those kinds of issues. And again, it's looking at what's known as the success bound, so how do we get students on a right path, so when they graduate, they've got different opportunities? They've got the new Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal, and again, I'm going to point out to the high school, Rob and his team have been working over a year now on these issues, we've attended several trainings, I think we've done a really good job of staying on top of what the state's putting out, we've followed the development of the strategic plan, and we have a business advisory council that's been in place really for, I think, about 12 or 13 years, but it all got revamped and redeveloped as the state put in some new legislative guidelines that we have to follow with them this year. But you can see some of the people that participate in that, they're on that list, it's a great, great list of resources in our community, they love discussing this with us, we've started getting some teachers to come, we've got some administrators coming to it, and we're just really talking about even what they need in our community. So if it's students that are looking for going into the workforce, what do they look for in terms of a worker, and how can we use that knowledge to communicate to our own students? So if they want to choose that path, they've got options when they graduate to go into the workforce. And it is things like, even attendance, so what is their threshold? What do they look for in terms of how much a person can miss work? What are the incentives for not missing work and so on? And then we convey that down to the students, so we can start getting that, that all started very early on. We did create a graphic on our success bound, and again, you can see the four tenants up on top, so we've got the post-graduation, the workforce, military, and then the self-sustaining vocation. And what we're trying to put together is, by each year, what is required, what does the profile look like for a freshman, a sophomore, junior, and senior? And it has those components to it that will make them bound for success. And then above those, we're working on getting the concept of a countdown clock to graduation, and we want that running, so that when the student looks at their list, or a parent sees those items listed, they have that sense of when it has to be completed. And yeah, we want a little bit of urgency to it, so what happens is, if they get behind, by the time they get into late sophomore, early junior year, if they're credit deficient, it's really hard to get motivated and get back on track. So our hope and goal is, let's keep them on track their freshman and sophomore year, not let them fall behind, where it becomes too easy to kind of throw your arms up in the air and say, "I just can't do this." So trying to be more progressive with it. And then the drumbeat on the right, that just came out in the community this last week, and it really talks about some of this, I can't say it, success-bound work we're doing. And I've received quite a bit of good feedback on that, actually, so we're happy with that. Just a few other things that we're working on, we did get our salad bar opened up at the high school, and that's been very successful, it runs during the middle of the week, Tuesday through Thursday, and even students on free and reduced lunch can get that option, and it's been a very, very popular piece. We opened up our memorial garden this week, had our ceremony last night, and that was very well-attended, and just a really great moment, I believe, for those parents, and how we could finally recognize all those students. Just briefly on that, we did have a memorial garden that was put in earlier, it wasn't in a good location, it was actually by a parking lot, a lot of times cars kind of blocked it, but we had a number of students that passed away in the elementary schools, and when the old buildings were in place, they had memorials that had been put into those areas, and when those old schools were taken down, we removed the memorials, because we didn't want them to be damaged or vandalized in any way. So this memorial garden gives us a chance to have one location for all students, it's a consistent format, and it gives us a great place to go to recognize all of them at once. We have a new Music Hall of Fame that's going in at the high school, the glass cases are put in out there, the shelving is on its way, that will be developing more. And then Mr. Messick opened up his veteran wall this week, if you've not seen that yet, it is beyond impressive, in my opinion, and he has a number of veterans that graduated from Pickle High School that have started to submit their photos and their background information. It is a touchscreen in the middle there, and students, or anybody that visits can go up there and use the touchscreen to find people from graduating class to the kind of military service that they gave, you can look people up by their last name, pretty much, I think, three different formats. And it's been very interesting to watch that develop, and I think that will continue to grow. And then the last thing I would spotlight is, our garden project over at Nicklin has doubled. Ruth Coon and her team has worked continuously on grants, again, all funded by people in the community. Where's Josh? What are they growing right now? Is it spinach? So you talked to the kids, and they're trying vegetables for the first time, and I've shared before, last year, they had so much lettuce, that every kid got a salad, every staff member got a salad, they had stuff for the salad project the next day, and then they donated 13 bags to the Bethany Center of fresh produce. And it's just very exciting to see the kids out there with the master gardeners, and they're learning a lot, and they're really, really enjoying that process. So a lot of really just fun and interesting... That's my report, is there any questions or anything that I might discuss?
Have anything else to add?
Nope, that's it.
Nothing under other. Okay, go ahead with the superintendent's agenda.
Okay, would like to recommend the board approval, the attached list of donations, and I'll just read a few here. Again, a lot of people donated to these projects that you saw up there, they were all funded by either grants, foundations, or individuals, but Bob Lyons contributed to the Veterans Wall, we have the American Legion that did so, the Dick Donnelly Foundation gave a large sum, I believe they put in about half of it there, and then French Oil gave us a really nice donation for some student incentives that supports their PBIS program over there. So a lot of great support from the community, and we're real appreciative of that. I'd like to also recommend the board to approve the attached overnight extended student trips for the PHS wrestling team, this is that same trip they take every year where they go to that competition, and that's it.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Good evening, for the personnel agenda tonight, we have several FMLA requests, as well as requests for long-term substitutes because of those. We're fortunate enough that we have some people who are licensed teachers, maybe didn't get a job for this coming year, coming right out of college and they're in our buildings now, doing a great job for our kids, so gives them kind of a trial run at teaching, and it gives us a chance to see some new teachers, too, and maybe build some capacity with them. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, on the supplemental list with Rick Claproot, longtime softball coach, with his, ahead of him to replace that position, and we had several candidates that ultimately came down to three, that went to, after meeting with him, went to a committee that was made up of principals, community member, other coaches, and he ended up bringing two candidates to me, we met with both of them, and we're fortunate, things don't work out like this very often, but not only were we able to select the head coach that was best for the program, but also the second candidate, or the number two candidate, is going to be the assistant coach. So you've got Greg Campbell as the head coach, and Eric Blankenship as the assistant coach, both on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to point that out, because again, Rick was a longtime coach, and we feel like those folks are going to be able to continue to grow that program. So outside of that, volunteers, one of the things we need to mention is, you don't always need to come here to get fingerprinted, if you're interested in coming in and volunteering for a day in your child's classroom, something like that, we have a system in place to do background checks called Raptor, and people can come in and just have your ID, and we can check you in and do those things there, rather than coming to the board office and waiting for a significant amount of time to get fingerprinted. So now for long field trips and overnight events, you will have to come to the board office and get on that volunteer fingerprint approved list as well. So outside of that, nothing else with the personnel agenda.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Mr. Lyons? If not, can we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I have nothing about hearing of the public on non-agenda items, we have no old business, and so we have a couple new business items. Jeremy will talk about the one.
Sure. The first item on there is the Board of Education parking lot expansion, that'd be on the south side of the building, between here and Garbry Road. As you can see with the roundabout being put in, they're out there tearing into what used to be part of our property, and today, as a matter of fact, they actually started working into our property to put a catch basin in further, so that if we went forward with this parking lot project, that it was ready, so that it's tied into the whole system, we don't create problems down the road trying to attach into the new stuff. So we'll put it out for bid, Tycon came back as the lowest bidder, and we got a letter from the architect that did all of our bid work, recommending them to move forward with the parking lot expansion project here at the board office. When we have our PD sessions and stuff here, it becomes very difficult with parking, we hosted Rotary here, and all of our staff parked over next door at Matt's, at McCullough Baker Insurance, and this will help alleviate that problem and allow us to do some more things here at the building.
Are there any other questions on that project? Okay, if not, we need to have, we need to approve that, do we have a motion to approve the parking lot project?
So move.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second, Mr. Hiddle, please call the rules since you're spending money.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostic.
Aye.
Mrs. McMacan.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. And the policy updates?
This should only take about 45 minutes for me to read each one of these.
Tony, did you see how brief those kids answered their questions?
So, I won't, that's what I'm going to do. Most of these, in fact, are language changes, with legislation comes changes to law, and so Neola notifies us when it's time to make adjustments in language to our policies, one of which is going to be the college and career, or College Credit Plus piece, that I know Mr. Messick has worked on with superintendent as well, to make sure that there's, if kids aren't having success, this policy now explains the process for kids to re-enter essentially College Credit Plus. So if they get a D or an F, they don't have success, instead of them not ever being able to take it again, or just continue to take things and not have success, now there's a pathway for them to return to College Credit Plus courses. So just an example, again, the rest of them are language changes, generally speaking, and you have access to all of those as well.
Okay, and we need to approve these tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the policy update?
It's just the first.
All right.
I'll just say, just for our, for my purposes in the treasurer's office, we are updating our credit card policy, but it was sort of, we were actually following the practice that the state has required us to do, so it was sort of an easy fit to name a credit card czar, if you want to call him that. Karen Magato has been fulfilling that position for the district since before I came here, she keeps track of everyone's credit cards, their balance, credit limits, processes, all the receipts, looks through every payment that's made, everything that's charged, so this formalizes that process, but it's already in place, so it's just something I want you guys to be aware of, that we've been doing this practice, and this just makes a formal policy, but they really basically made a policy that we were already doing, so there are places that weren't doing that. So because we have people throughout the district that have credit cards in hand at all times, we had to do, it has to be a little bit more specific than just checking it in and out of the board office, so.
I might add, just for, we had all of the Pickle fourth graders the last few days out at the farm, and we had a good time with all of them, and I think they all went back to the building in one piece, we didn't lose anybody, so. We tried today, we had another school, we tried to lose a couple of them, but it didn't work. Okay, if there's nothing else, our next meeting is October the 18th, here at 6:00 PM. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.